Board members, please come back to the table. We are an hour and a half behind. Okay, I'm going to start, and I'm going to take a point of personal privilege and share some information first. FATE organization needs that so that we can continue the house building. And Dr. Bray Brandon isn't here, but the... Yes, but I...
Janie's trying to sell some property today, too.
Yes. So that my colleagues know, we've had several meetings, and we have about eight years. It takes time to do this, but just so that you all know, it takes time to do this. We have been trying to work with some of the members of the board supervisors. I believe we are... The superintendent has directed also that Jeff Plattenberg be at the table with us to help us with this. But we must find additional property. You all are flexible. You're willing to do a lot of different things. But we need to get people to the table to figure out how we're going to go forward. And we still have property to continue to construct the homes. And the home building program funds itself by as each home is sold, that money goes into then getting ready to build the next home. But we have succeeded in being able to find more opportunities. But we really have to work a little harder, folks, to find this property. So the rest of you are all on notice for as you work with your members of the board of supervisors, as you work with members on the planning commission, and Fairfax County Public Schools, and all the rest of it. But it takes a lot of arm twisting to find it, but we need this opportunity. This is again, a important trades, important opportunities for good employment and opportunities for our kids. So workforce readiness, this is good. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and let them talk, and then we will continue on. But I didn't... Yes, Elizabeth will be first. Okay. Let us begin our wonderful report on FATE.
Thank you so much for opening with that, my manager.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
I'll get into that in a second, but that, just briefly, I mean, it's not so much that that's the portion of what we do that funds, helps us be self-sufficient. It is one of the primary engines that helps us fund all the other CTE programs that don't generate money. So it is of vital, of vital importance that we continue to try to find out whatever our next landing spot is, whatever that is. Really, that's kind of our role in FATE is to be adaptable and try to figure out how to be adaptable and find out new and creative ways to promote all the programs within CTE. So thank you for letting us present here tonight. This is always fun. You know, for me personally, my name's William Lang. I'm the current president of FATE. I've started making some changes to my notes to try to streamline things for you guys this evening. So, but that, not to diminish anything that I'm talking about here, I'm willing to stay here for as long as you like afterwards to answer whatever questions you may have, or even after this evening if everybody wants to go to bed, and you can email me later. That's fine. So, you know, first off, it really is a privilege to serve on this board, and I know I speak on behalf of everybody on the board. You know, we really are honored that you've entrusted us with this fiduciary and advisory role. You know, as people in business, it's, it's our job to try to be more efficient and be adaptable and try to figure out new and innovative ways to make money at the end of the day. The fun thing about what we do is we get to do that, figure out new ways to educate students, young men and women, and, but all the money that we make, we don't get to keep, we just get to funnel it back into the schools. That's the fun part. Sometimes it's a little bit challenging, but everything is. So, you know, having said that, in an effort to try to streamline things, I'll hit just some of the bullet points of what we've, we're able to accomplish, the quantifiable things that we've done. Students yet again built another home. We sold it for $919,000 this year. That's $34,000. Thank you. That's $34,000 of an increase over the last home that we sold. Students worked on and sold 200, over $245,000 in automobiles this year. 300, roughly 350 cars were donated. 200 of those made up that dollar amount. There's about 150 that were purely, were just instructional and weren't able to be sold. But that went through the system. Of that money, $184,000 roughly was returned back to the schools, and whether that was to help the automobile programs be self-sufficient, or improve on their tools, or other ways of their instruction, that's not our decision once it goes out there, but we're happy to be able to push that back in. We awarded $14,500 in scholarships this year. Part of that was money that was donated into the over 25 business partnerships that we have, although we're always trying to find more. One of the things that I was hoping to maybe throw out to you guys to discuss, but again, we can discuss it later, was we had about $4,500 of earmarked scholarships that weren't taken advantage of. That's kind of painful for us. You know, it's there, and how do we make it? We feel like we're trying to make it easy to get and apply for it, but we don't have an explanation for that. Maybe that's something you guys would be able to offer some insight on. We offered over $4,000 in tool scholarships. These are scholarships that literally, there's a list of tools for whatever trade that they're in that they go out, and we have an instructor go with them to purchase so that they get a leg up when they start for wherever they're going. We continued our successful support with seed money to the entrepreneurship programs in Chantilly, Marshall, and Oakton. We're now hoping, or in talks with, expanding that to West Potomac, Fall Church, Herndon, and South County. Neat programs. That was, started off with a spirit box, but we send, or we used to have, give seed money for students to go up to New York to find products, to figure out how to purchase and sell, and then pay that money back. But essentially, it's an entrepreneurship program where, hey, we're going to give you the seed money to do whatever it is you're thinking of doing, come up with a business plan, and let us know how you're going to pay it back. And they always do, I think, for the most part.
They always do.
Yeah.
Usually early.
That's true. We've grown our membership by four people this year, and not just in worn bodies. These are people that are in fields relevant to what we're doing. We're real excited about that. It's the first time we've had that in quite some time. We just recently went down to Richmond. We were recognized by the Virginia Board of Education. We got an award for an outstanding advisory committee in career and technical education. Kind of fun to hobnob with some of the other school programs, as small as 600 people and as large as ours, which is 180,000 students, all of them doing the same thing to some degree that we're doing. And we actually were able to get a couple ideas from some of the other smaller jurisdictions. You had touched on it, the construction site. We continue our efforts, and thank you for the support for a number of you that are currently on the board. We're actually even working with former school board members. It's a, it's a long process to identify, but then even if we have that, as Mrs. Strauss had mentioned, even if we had it in our lap, it's still a long process to get it to the point where we can start doing something with it. So we need to be looking at it now, even though we have about eight or nine years left on our current site, but if we continue to do one home a year. And then lastly, which is always great news, it's not a real number, but we apparently have strong enrollment for our summer course this year in construction, and we already have a lot of interest in next year, which is, you know, one of our biggest challenges is overcoming this, and we're thankful for Dr. Bray Brandon's renewed focus on career and college readiness. How do we overcome the, you know, maybe stigma that you're not going to go to college? It doesn't even mean that. You know, a lot of times it's learning a trade and going to college, and you always have something to fall back on, or even in the summers have something to come back to. So that's something that we're constantly talking about and trying to figure out how we can market ourselves better. Those are the bullet points in rapid fire. One thing I did want to talk a little bit about this evening that is not so much quantifiable, but it's a, it's a big thing for us as an organization. We've, in the last couple of years, we've had to go through a reorganization ourselves. We've had primarily, for over a year, we were without an executive director. We just recently, although it was known, we were having our auto dealer, which was a big deal, and student auto sales teacher retire after being in the position for 16 years. Very key roles in what we do. But as with all organizations that hopefully are successful, you, you experience these periods of change, and hopefully you're evaluating, you know, what's happening, and then trying to look at them as opportunities to grow. What really came out of it in this year, and I think the reorganization dust is starting to settle, is we had a renewed commitment from the staff at Fairfax County Public Schools. Because we didn't have the, those peoples in, people in those key roles, and the liaison that we relied on between the FATE board, which only meets once a month, and some of those months have awards dinners and touring schools and going to market days, we had to work directly with the staff at Fairfax County Public Schools. And not that they weren't committed, but their truly tireless efforts in settling homes and figuring out all the things that we didn't know because a lot of institutional knowledge left those positions. If you please would allow me, I'd like to talk about some of those people that were directly involved. Joe DeCio, who's an employee at Fairfax County, he's our new acting executive director. We could not be more thankful to have him in that role. Beth Downey, who's sitting here next to me, would probably tell you that, or admit that she now knows how to swing a hammer, I think.
I know the difference between a lot of different fights.
Jen Glazer, and even Sloan Presidio. You know, we've had meetings in trying to fill these roles that we needed. But it caused us all to work together, and as we started peeling back the onion, what's come out of it again is the fact that it caused us to evaluate all of our processes as a business would do. How can we do this better? And starting to implement those processes. The other cool thing that we were able to do at every turn in trying to evaluate those processes is could we integrate that into the curriculum somehow? Just some of the few things that are coming out of it. Construction schedules. It's a big deal in the construction field. If you don't line up all the vendors, and in my other life, I'm a home builder, if you don't line up all the vendors, it is truly a domino effect. If one guy doesn't show up, or one vendor doesn't show up, it's not so much that you're going to get delayed those few days, the next person that was counting on showing up may have another job to go to. And so then everybody else gets affected. And for what we're doing, in having multiple courses throughout the day come through, if somebody's not managing that schedule, it could potentially be a big problem. Budgeting, it's another one. Creating accounting codes, doing a bid package and the bidding process. Something to point out here, though, in the home building business, at least from the construction portion of what we do, these are all aspects of, of an industry that aren't trades. These are things that you have to go to college for. So it's not so much that we're swinging hammers. We're teaching people accounting, we're teaching people a lot of administrative supporting roles that somebody might be interested in moving on to. Another thing that we were able, out of necessity or had to do, was as, you know, we're, we are the only auto dealer, we, meaning Fairfax County Public Schools of FATE, we're the only auto dealer in the state that has a license the way that it, that we have it, but we have to meet certain requirements to be an auto dealer. So everybody had to roll their sleeves up and figure out how to create a dealership, an actual car dealership within Fairfax County's properties. And I can let Beth expand on that if she'd like, or if you guys would like to know it. But, you know, kind of cool stuff, and it's staffed. We're going to have to have a staffed car dealership on Fairfax County's property. So having said that, again, the dust is starting to settle. Although, all the stuff that we typically do, super exciting for us as a, you know, kind of quasi-business, the reorganization and learning how to be more efficient and hopefully resulting in doing things quicker, having a higher net come out of it once the things are done and sold, it's, it's all going to be a win-win because we're going to be able to funnel more back into the, into the whole program. So I'm excited about for what we're going to be doing in the future. Again, I'd like to reiterate, we'd like to explore and hopefully leverage everybody's renewed interest in career and collegiate readiness. One of the things, and I'll just point this out, was interesting, and, and it happened when we were down in Richmond, was, you know, we, we had to meet with the governor's staff on just this topic, and that is a renewed interest at that level as well. So we did invite them to come up, not to scare anybody, but we did invite them to come up and see what we're doing to see if there's anything that potentially we can come up that. So anyway, having said that, again, our biggest challenge is how do we attract interest in what we're doing? How do we find site three? And how do we get the word out for what we're doing and the scholarships we provide, and really all the good things we're doing at FATE in conjunction with everybody at the staff level?
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And Dr. Bray Brandon said he just wrote down again, site. We got to find a site.
We're not going to talk tomorrow day. Talk to me, talk to me next week. Great.
We're still working on that. Okay, great. This is just a wonderful program, and it is so entrepreneurial. And again, this is sort of a program that also I was a part of almost 30 years ago. So it's, it's, it's wonderful, and all the various pieces, and the, the interesting entrepreneurial pieces that you've put in, you know, sort of the challenge, I forget what you call them in each high school, where, you know, can you buy and sell and market, and here's the kid, and they borrow money, they set themselves up, and then they pay you back, and the fact that you're going to continue to expand that.
We do that through our entrepreneurship program, and so the most recent addition to that program is mobile kiosks.
Exactly.
That we're putting into the programs.
Exactly.
And then running school stores, and they're also running spirit boxes.
Right, exactly. It's great. It's wonderful. Okay. I have Ms. Schultz, Ms. Palchak, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Mr. Wilson. So Ms. Schultz, you're first up.
So not to draw a comparison to, but this is what I'm talking about between the previous presentation that we had and this one. What you talked about was a continuous quality improvement process through every aspect. At every turn, when something presented a challenge, whether it was how you staff the board, who you get to advise, who you get to replace, how you turn over money, this is, this is about making choices. If you presented a report to us that said you sold a house for, you know, $712,000, but it cost us $919,000, and that you were coming to us to ask us for more money for you to keep making houses and selling them at a loss, we would have a different conversation. And it's this kind of thoughtfulness to how FATE has gone about staffing and reorganizing and focusing that I'm grateful for, because you're also teaching the students the lesson that not only are you self-sustaining, but you're actually paying back into the program for other things, good things to happen from what you're doing. And it is a mindset that you're operating at this sort of ethos versus what we had before. And we do have to keep talking about that as a board, is that we're operating as we've always done with the previous presentation, and this is operating in such a way that you, the very way in which you're operating is in fact an education. So I want to offer you kudos for that. With regard to the participation of the students themselves, I think I, I thought I caught it, you said there's 180 students?
No, I was referencing the comparison of Goochlin School District, which had 600 students, and ours that had 180,000.
But how many students do we actually have and per calendar year participating in this? It's like a couple dozen, or?
That's just in the construction.
In the residential construction site onsite, we have approximately 20, and we're capped by the state at 20. But we bring onsite our HVA students and our electrical students, and then we run approximately 20 students in the summertime in addition to that 20 during the school year.
So is that a summer, is that a separate summer enrollment?
It's not a course. It's actually a program that runs through FATE, and they become employees of FATE, and we pay them to come and work on a job site for a four to five week program, depending on the calendar.
So the reason I ask this is I'm, I think, I, I don't know about Mr. Wilson's, oh, I think I do, the age. I, so I have a 17-year-old who is a rising senior, and one of the things that we've recently explored is how would he be able to even do this? Would he be able to do it with his college schedule, hopeful college schedule? And for the benefits of this, and I will tell you that exploring it myself as a parent about how to even do it was very difficult. Like, like I ran, other than just giving up and going and saying, okay, well, I just, I guess I have to go to the school and figure out how it could be done. So I just, I wonder if there's a barrier to, not only the barrier that you talked about, sort of that inherent, we're still in that VOTAC, or some of us, the more experienced, the more seasoned, the more seasoned among us are, have that sort of association to VOTAC. And as you're trying to break free from that, if you are legitimately trying to explore it, how, that connectivity to the program itself about how to functionally become involved in it, specifically in the house building part, is hard. And I don't know what can be done about that, but if it's hard for me, it's going to be hard for a lot of people, you know, that, that are not as engaged and involved as, you know, somebody who is a parent and a board member. So that's, that's part one. Part two is what is it specifically that you're looking for for the next? Is it, is it a land donation? I mean, ask specifically what you want. Do you need a donation of land? Do you need, you know, air rights to existing land? I mean, what is it? So that's the other question. And then the third thing is, have we ever thought about highlighting the work that all of these students are doing across the, the programs with the vehicles? And I think that the, the concept of having a dealership and that kids are preparing cars that are donated to actually be sold, that actually make money, that actually goes back into the system, that plus building a house that's selling for close, you know, we're closing in on a million dollars, getting the MicroWorks Foundation involved to come here and do a special on us to further highlight that this is sort of the gold standard of how you elevate that discussion and, and basically change the nature of the discussion of moving from not only college readiness, but to career readiness with career and tech certifications walking out of high school.
Can we answer it now? Yep. So first, the logistics, certainly a challenge. Students have to get to the site because we can't move the site of 18 homes. So I imagine that that's a hurdle. We are constantly exploring how to overcome that. And it hasn't died. We're still exploring even the tiny home thing, where potentially you could have a tiny home at each school. The challenge with that is, and not to get off track, is it has to be a self-sustaining business model. And so we still haven't proven that out. So it's a challenge, and I'm sure that that's a hurdle that we have to overcome to get more people involved. The land portion of it, that's a complicated answer. We're kind of in a state of beggars can't be choosers. We were fortunate enough to have the land that was earmarked for a school set aside for this, on this community. I think prior to it, it was the same thing for the McLean project.
That I'm not sure of. For the McLean project. But this one was originally a school site, and then when they built the Fairfax County Parkway, it went through the middle of the property, so it was no longer large enough for a school site. So that's how we were able to acquire the land. I'm not sure. Ms. Strauss, she may remember how we acquired the condo.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was no longer useful for us, and as we continue to look at properties we own, and that's our problem, is that we really don't have anything anymore, but it is, but we simply have to continue to work with the county.
But my question is, like, so are you looking for tear downs? Are you looking, I mean, is it?
Sure. The complexity of the answer is that, yes, we're looking for anything, but, you know, if you're a home builder, you just say, okay, well, this is a new problem. I'm over, I'm going to overcome it, and I'm going to build it. But the challenge is getting students to the site. So if it's one teardown, it's probably not worth everybody's time because the cycle's going to happen so quick, and then you're like, okay, well, what do we do next? And so do we look at doing not single families, do we look at multifamily? Do we look at townhouses? So there's all these things we have to overcome. I think our ask to originally the school board, and now we're going up to the county level, is just, we'll look at anything, give us the opportunity to try to figure it out.
And the last part was about the?
Highlighting the work. I'd love to find out a little bit more about what MicroWorks is. I don't know. I apologize. But our biggest problem is marketing.
Micro is the dirty jobs guy. But he's moved on from dirty jobs, and now he has a foundation that's driven towards highlighting and giving scholarships for the career and technical education of, you know, predominantly students. I mean, this is what, you know, his work, and it just seems to me like this would be a natural fit, and maybe even a fit for our, you know, for our AV students, you know, this, I mean, there's just so many aspects of this that would be good to highlight and then may yield, like, unsuspecting, you know, opportunities down the road for us that, you know, I would encourage that the FATE board explore, you know, I'm happy to help with that because this is, I mean, this is the pathway it's going to be for a lot, for a lot of students, and the more that we can elevate the, you know, what you do and how you do it, I think the easier it becomes, and I want to help pave the way for that to be accessible for more students.
We absolutely will look into that. We've had a lot of different TV stations and print publicity over the years, but recently we have not had anything. We kind of got off schedule this past year in our, with our homes, so that's definitely something we can look at. And we, actually, one of the things that Mr. DeCio wants to implement is a community open house, and so that would be a great time to try to incorporate this MicroWorks piece with it.
The last question would be in terms of land, is I don't know who has acquired the Northern Virginia, Northern Virginia training site that's close to Robinson off Abrahattic.
Greenspring Village, the Erickson community is my understanding.
Okay.
That they have bought that for another retirement community.
Okay, so that's not so much in our bailiwick. Okay.
But we need to continue to look.
Right.
We've kind of come up with something.
I would like to go back real quickly to the registration piece. We do run the registration through when students do their academic advising and registration for classes. That's how they register for the summer program. We, we do not advertise widely with that program because it's a very small number of students we can accommodate because of Department of Labor rules. We can only take 20 students. And so advertising widely becomes a problem for us because then we don't, we can't accommodate all of the students that we can take. So we, we're trying to find the sweet spot between making it well-known, but also being able to accommodate only 20 students at a time because of Department of Labor rules.
Just because this will be taped and go on, are you guys full for next year?
At this time, I believe we are. If anyone's interested, they can certainly reach out to our office, and we can hook them up.
Okay, so don't, anybody who watches this don't like flood us with applications. You're full for next year.
Okay, Ms. Palchak?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. As someone who grew up with a father architect turned contractor, I appreciate the work and grew up with the smell. and grew up with the smell of wood chips, love them. I guess I have a couple of questions for you, I'm trying to figure out how we can best support and better understand, like Ms. Schultz was asking, what are, what is some of the need, and what will work, and what won't work for you? And we can obviously expand this conversation outside of here, knowing we're a county where land has become very tight. I guess my first question is, looking at some big projects that are construction, but not necessarily residential construction, is that something where, whether you're taking, you know, a contracting model, where you're perhaps working with a site, is that something that would work, or it really has to become, like, say, I-66 expansion, or it really should stick to residential construction?
Currently, our model is residential construction. We need to be careful with the age of our students and what they're allowed to do, so there are certain things, we, we've even talked about looking at apartment buildings, but then we, we run into rules and regulations with the Department of Labor and OSHA as to how high they can go in different spaces and different accommodations, but we are willing to look at, at different options, if at all possible, we just have to run it through all of the statewide regulations for the safety of the students.
Okay. And just to clarify, in the past, the land has always been donated, so it's, you're not purchasing the land, that's a cost that's been.
Correct.
A county or school system cost, and then all of the proceeds go back to you. So, so do you foresee that it would be possible if, say, you were to purchase land and build and sell, or that would then make it not sustainable?
That would dramatically change our model. It's not something that we have, we, we've thought about it, we've talked about it, but it's, it's not the first preference because it would, when you go into a site, you have to do a lot of site prep and a lot of work, and changing that model becomes very difficult for us, particularly because we are an educational institution, we do have more waste than normal, and we take longer to build than normal because we're teaching the students as we go.
Okay.
If I could add to that, so the, the difference being, we're building a house a year, and on a traditional model, unless you're 100% footing the bill for the acquisition and then the development, you're going to get a funding source from either a bank, or typically a bank. And the first thing the bank says is, when are you gonna get done? Because you're paying interest on it the entire time, and there's a fuse on how long that money can stay up. So it would dramatically change it, doesn't mean that we couldn't do it, but certainly it, it would cause some challenges.
So then say, look at another model, I think even on the planning commission, it was a surprise to them that less than 1%, less than that, Evans isn't here with me, of, of what's come in, what, what pays for our capital improvement has actually come from profits, it's actually a very small amount. So if we're starting to try to get creative, and we have many developers here in the county, if, say, a developer were to, you know, give a portion of land, would that also be difficult because it would just be one home on a site, or is that something that is workable?
I don't, I mean, we've definitely talked about that. It just depends on what it is. I mean, one, again, is the, it's one and done, and are we able to get enough instruction out of it to make it worth everybody's while? Apartments are kind of a little bit different, not so much for the OSHA thing too, but how do you build one apartment unit in a large complex? You know, the single-family model kind of seems to work because it's encapsulated one thing, right? We, we build it, and it's done, we go on to the next one. But we've looked at townhouses potentially could be, where you're doing a, a smaller stick is what they call it, how many are stuck together. There's a minimum that you could do, but potentially you could do that, where you could build the shell, and kind of close in the shell, and then finish one at a time. So it just depends.
Our current model now is that the students finish one house and start another house in the course of a year so that they, they get to see all aspects of a house, which is what we're hoping to give them a full education on, and changing that model is not to say that we couldn't do that, but it would dramatically change their education. And so we're trying to stick as close as possible to that. We did develop a, kind of a talking sheet for Ms. Strauss to help us as we were looking through that, and we can certainly make that available to the rest of you, it kind of goes through the different potential proposals of the different things that we could potentially make work.
Yes, if you, if you would send that again, and if it's updated so that.
Absolutely.
We can share.
That would be great, and if you haven't recently, I think it would be great to have you come and meet with the planning commission, I know they, they ask us about this kind of education pretty regularly.
Love to.
And I think especially Billy Braddock District, she's a big proponent, the representative, so that would be wonderful, and, and thank you for what you do. I actually have several student friends and family members went from FCPS to Ivy Leagues to jobs they hated, and went back and have flipped homes or worked in, in the field. So I, anything we can do to help support that balance of career and college readiness, really appreciate it.
Thank you for your support. Real quick, you jogged my memory, so there, there's an electrician that does some work for my company, that, he came in and recently helped us out on one of our homes, and it, we connected the dots, he actually went through this program, and he now owns the company, his own electrical company. And so he's more than happy to help us in what he's doing for us.
Great story. Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you so much. This and our academy programs, I think, are the future for so many of our kids. It's something that allows our kids to get real-life skills that they can either use immediately or use as a way of exploring future careers, so it's great. One of the things that, two things actually, one, very disappointed that you had scholarships that went unused, and we certainly don't want that to happen again, so when you are offering scholarships, please make sure that Dr. Braybrand knows about it, and that we get that information out to as wide of a distribution to students that we can. So that's important. And I, I want to remind everybody that FATE is more than just the building of houses, and more than just the car dealership, you all offer so many different skill, skills-building opportunities, so it's greatly appreciated. What would be helpful for us to be able to help you effectively is to have some collateral material that we can use in promoting participation by students, participation by potential partners for you, and by our counselors, because what I found is that I often would be at meetings with parent groups, counselors would be in the room, and I would talk about FATE and the opportunities of FATE, and the counselors are like, really, I don't know enough about it. So if we can really promote it, we're happy to do so. And then just a bit of an idea for you in looking at, I know you've been looking at new models and looking for ways of acquiring land. One of the things that the planning commission did in working with the schools a couple of years ago was modify the comprehensive plan for reuse of old office buildings, and the reuse to be multipurpose dwelling, including education facilities, but also living. And if you look at Embark Richmond Highway, which is the redevelopment of the Route 1 corridor, much of that includes not only new building, and so I would suggest that you reach out to the South County Development Foundation, but also the reuse of existing office buildings for other purposes. And so looking at that a bit, I think, would be helpful. And then I will urge Dr. Braybrand, we talked about this in the past, that we, as a school system, do an analysis of the existing properties that we have, and with a look towards, is there excess property that we can repurpose for education and development by FATE? And so I don't know if that's the next step, or just a, yeah, we know we need to do this.
Yeah, we've, we have met several times, we're a little short on any more property, we gave a lot of it, we gave it up. I think it would be useful, because I know that you have a packet that you can put together if you want to, you know, put, put together a set of packets for each board member, and then just deliver it to the board office.
It's digital.
And it is, part of it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for this presentation. This is a bright spot every year, and I think that all the board members would agree that this program really highlights innovation and connection with, with students who are looking and interested in, in learning trades and understanding entrepreneurship, auto rehabilitation and sales, and home construction and all this. Just as a personal note, I had a chance to walk through the most recent sale house before it was completed, on a little tour, and it is fantastic, really, amazing, amazing project, amazing level of quality in the construction, just really all, all top-notch.
Oh, thank you.
So what I, I'd, I'd like to talk a little bit about the tiny homes part of the annual report, because I'm intrigued by the idea of, I guess because my wife and I have talked about getting a tiny home ourselves, so that, you know, we can move out there when our kids take our house, and we can just come in for coffee in the morning. But that, that really has the potential, it seems, at least, to allow the, the kids to be able to be co-located with where they're gonna do the learning, and where they're gonna, where they're gonna be, receive some training and some connection to maybe a field that they wouldn't otherwise be able to get to, and to get to the location. And maybe this is really, and I'll let you handle it, have you thought about ways to expand that? Because it seems like you might even be able to, to pre-market those to, you know, families in Fairfax County who might be going to agree upfront based on, you know, you know, viewing one of the tiny home that's been done, and say, hey, you know, we'll take one of those, and, and allow the expansion of the program.
So we, we have, we've talked about this tiny home, everybody loves the tiny home, and, and myself included, I mean, it's just such a neat concept. We have talked to people from, I've personally talked to people from Maine that make these things. I know we've gone as far south as, I think it was Georgia we were gonna go down to, there's like a tiny home convention. The challenge is, especially here in Fairfax County, the zoning ordinances are pretty prohibitive in terms of how they can be used, if at all. So your market is not here. So we've branched out to see how other people are marketing them, and, and it's kind of a challenge for everybody in terms of what's allowed and what isn't. And that, that really dictates the type of tiny home that you're building and selling. Some people use them for maybe hunting, some people use them as a permanent getaway, so then it, it gets into, you have to build them, some that can be mobile, and then you have to build some that aren't meant to be mobile, you just plop them down and they're, they're there, and, and, you know, at the end of the day, we've got to figure out how we can, what, who we're marketing to, and how much are they gonna pay for it? Because that's a huge range, too. So we've even explored, okay, let's not be the people that are the, that are building it and selling it, let's go to somebody that's already got a successful business model, and maybe we'll build it for them. And we've explored that route. So we're, we're looking at every different way to do this, given the self-sustaining challenge, the, our, you know, location where we are, and who we're marketing them to. But if you have, if anybody has ideas, I mean, just, if we could do it and that wasn't the challenge, man, we could do one at each school, the possibilities are endless in terms of solving a lot of our problems with what we initially started talking about.
So for immediate, I guess, to try to expand a little bit right now, we're, we're working to try to figure out with Chantilly and the Carpentry Program there, where potentially we could do a buildup and a teardown. So we're using the materials so the students get the experience of building, and at the end of the year, we reuse them and do it again the next year with a different group of students, so that the, the cost isn't prohibitive, and we can do something with the houses when they're done. So that's kind of what we're working with right now to see if we can use that Carpentry Program in that aspect, and serve those students on that end of the county who can't make it to a residential construction site, to give them that experience also.
Great, well, I'll look forward to next year's update on that.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you, Mr. Nick Kofex.
I just wanted to thank you for your time here tonight, and since I started on this board, you know, the houses are in my district, and I was so impressed the first time I saw them, and, you know, I often, I still tell the story to people who don't know, you know, what we do and what your group does, donate the car, you know, go, do you realize we have children, students, building houses under, you know, the leadership of, of trained craftsmen? And I just, every year, I, I'm just, continue to be impressed at what we do and, and what you do. I really don't have any questions, I too am just concerned that, you know, we left some of, my experience has been much the same as, as Ms. Sanders, I find that some of our counselors don't, are, aren't quite as versed as they should be on your programming and what's offered, and I think that's on us, and Dr. Braybrand, I think that's something we have to do, and we have to get better at. We've been talking about this for years, but now with some monies left on the table, I know some of my schools, I mean, I happen to live close to the site, so I know Lee High School and Edison High School are full participants in it, including, you know, the Culinary Academy, which puts on the reception, and student photographers, but I think as we move forward, you know, we need to, and I, and I know you have constraints, as you said, on the number of students and things you can, can put in there. So I'm hoping those, that programming is full up, but I want to, any help you can give us, and I think, you know, perhaps our communications department can work on how to better spread the word for the scholarship monies that are available. And I do have one question, do you accept cars all year long at the sites, or do they close in the summer? You do? Because I have my second one to give you, my second minivan that I'm gonna donate. So I will plan to give that to Edison sometime this summer, I gave one about five years ago, and now I have another one to give, so.
For the summer, you'll need to call our central office and we can.
Central office, okay.
We'll reach out to you.
Okay, I will do that.
Yes, they'll meet you at the door, they're great.
Well, they'll even come pick it up.
Yes, I know. Ms. Keis Kamara.
Well, thank you for coming. I, as a newest member, I am completely unaware of this program, other than until I got this, and I'm a little surprised at that, since I have three boys that are interested in tearing stuff up and putting it back together. So I would like to give some very basic information, and, and such as who, who you, and, and Ms. Darren at Kofex kind of, you know, it's in a different area than where I'm living. The houses are, okay. So I'd like to know, like, how many children, how many kids can participate per year? And how do those students become aware? I'll just start there, and, and then I'd like to go from there, so.
Well, I want to try to put a little clarity to this, FATE is the Foundation for Applied Technical Education that allows us to do some of the things in our career and technical education program. So these are actually career and technical education courses that are advertised and marketed and available to all of our students through our regular program. FATE's the vehicle through which we can, no pun intended there, the vehicle through which we can actually sell the cars and build the houses, because we couldn't do that as a school system in another way. So students who work on the student auto sales cars are enrolled in our auto tech program, programs that are at 13 different sites.
I'm aware of that much, but I wasn't aware of.
The residential construction site is, runs through our Edison Academy, and students register through the Edison Academy, and then they either, in some cases, the buses go directly to the site, in other cases, they go to Edison and we catch a hub to take them over to the residential construction site. So they're attached, all of these programs are attached to academy programs or base school programs already. So it's done through the academic advising, FATE is the vehicle through which we can do a lot of that, and, and the funding runs through, but the registration is our normal registration process.
Okay, so do you, would you know how many kids have been able to work with the residential part of it?
During the school year, it's approximately 20 students who are enrolled in our Construction Technologies class per year, roughly. But then we also bring over about 20 electrical students and 20 HVA students, HVAC students, and then during the summer, we have an additional 20 students that are involved in that program.
And so I know you primarily have looked at new homes, is that correct?
Yes, currently, we, we're in our second subdivision.
Okay, but have you looked at, like, perhaps where maybe homes have been condemned, or things like that?
That's part of what we're exploring.
Trying to access through the county, because, you know, they would be involved if people haven't paid taxes or whatever, trying to access. haven't paid taxes or whatever, trying to access some of those homes.
Part of what we're exploring for site, for the, the third phase of the program is that, what happens with that though, because it is a registration process that the students register for, if you move the site around every year, it's difficult for the, to build any leverage with a, with a community because you're, might be in McLean one year and you might be in South County another year and in Chantilly another year. And so your base students, it took us a couple of years when we moved from McLean to Springfield to build up our base of students because they can't, it's difficult for transportation and accounting our size with the traffic that we have to get students from point A to point B and have them be able to access that program. And we've talked about expanding out to multiple sites, but logistically, we're just not set up to do that right now. It is something we would love to be able to do, but logistically, we just can't do it right now.
I understand. And I certainly would encourage exploring with the county board of supervisors with respect to changing any parts of the comprehensive plan to kind of make things more available or more possible for the tiny homes or whatever. So I think that might be, I know we've done it before, it can be done again.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. It's always such fun to hear the great work of Dr. Braybrand.
I just want to say something on this that this is a CAT III. This program's a CAT III. The reality is for Fairfax County, something only 20 kids are getting, why isn't it 200? Why isn't it 2,000? And something another board member said, this is part of the future of what Portrait of a Graduate is. We have had flat academy staffing in the budget for 10 years in Fairfax County schools. I want to say that again. Flat academy staffing. And I think that's, as we keep moving together in the budget and have these tough conversations, where do we want to put our resources and dollars? And it's about expanding more, you give a kid this and they're on a whole nother path. And I've saw it, I've seen it here, I saw it in the division I was in for a while. And the more we can get this to become the model through all of our schools, part of it is the counselors, you know, it's only 20 kids, so, you know, once it's, oh, it's full, you know, you, you don't see it as a counselor as the go-to, right? Like if every other kid could get in, you'd have that wow. But it's almost like the Willy Wonka chocolate bar that one has the golden ticket. 20 kids in a system of 190,000 or whatever, 14,000 high school kids is not a lot. But it is absolutely the gold standard. It's great. And thank you and your team. You know, you have your annual thing for the business employers at the Fairfax Country Club. It's first class. It was before I left. It's been since I came back and you invited me to come. And I appreciate, and Beth, you know, your first class and I really appreciate everything. One of the things we're working to do way back when, when we started, we had internships in our own school system for maintenance and carpenters. And with Beth's help, we are restarting that this summer. I believe we are, right?
Monday.
Monday. So we're bringing back, doing something. We've got our own connections to connect kids to work we have. And so I, I just think this is some, this is one where I want to really spend more time as we keep developing our budget in alignment with our strategic plan and talk about, this is capstone work in a different place. So anyway, sorry, but I just felt compelled to say that.
Great. Thank you very much. You can tell, we're excited about what you guys do.
We are too. But thank you all for your support and thanks for coming to dinner and everybody that's been coming to that and participating. It's real important to us.
Mr. Moon, he has one more.
Assistant Superintendent mentioned about, you know, academy programs not having enough staffing to accommodate demands from students. To I understand it correctly, it's about 13 teachers you need currently to meet the
Some of our estimates give us about 13 positions. However, it's complicated because we don't necessarily have the classroom space and the materials and equipment available to expand.
You need to have classrooms, but.
And some of that academy staffing is language staff.
Absolutely. I, I get that too.
And all this career stuff. So we've flatlined that for over decades. And this is for another time and place, but I just wanted to make.
That's the next presentation. It is.
That's right. That's right. Maybe, maybe, maybe we can actually fund budgets again and grow in places that makes sense. Mrs. Schultz, 30 seconds.
Just, just real quick, go back. That's why I think something like a MicroWorks highlight of this, because it is CAT III, would be, would be advantageous. And just on a swag, the $840,000 or so that, you know, we're feeding into ACE, I can swag that and that's about 13 people. So I'm just saying on priorities, the K through 12 has got to be our focus, so.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thanks so much.
All right. All right. We'll, two, two minutes, people, and we need to do CTEC, the partnership, the CTE programs. Thank you.
I'm not going anywhere on the next person.